Okay, ladies and gentlemen, according to my Verizon clock, it is seven o'clock, and I like to start things on time. First of all, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Scott Leach. I'm the new superintendent at Dundee Community Schools. It's an honor to be serving as superintendent in this great community. As a former social studies teacher, today is like cloud nine, man. This is exciting stuff for me. This is, you know, what it's about. It's Small Town America. It's democracy in action. We, as you guys know, and Tanya will let you know, we've got four seats available. You've got two seats of four-year terms. You've got one of a two-year term and one of a six-year term. So each of these people are running at different seats. And I just want to thank the eight individuals here today. We have a ninth individual who could not make it today, and that's Ms. Patty Madelinski. We are going to be recording her answers, and then we will blend it together, probably at the end, and then release it. So it is being recorded, and then eventually released once we have all the candidates' answers. So we just wanted to let you know that. I just want to thank you. I'm actually pretty pleased. I wasn't sure how many people would show up today, and this is exciting stuff. So I appreciate it. Sometime during the day, there are cards up front here. I don't know if you have any. If you have any additional questions you want to ask, I'll be collecting those towards the end, going through them, and then giving Ms. Whitaker the ones that we have time to ask. So without further ado, I'm a man of few words, because you don't want to hear me ramble on, but I want to introduce our facilitator today, and that's Ms. Tanya Whitaker from the Dundee Independent. Tanya?
That's fine. So we're here to meet the candidates, and here are some of their views and opinions. As Mr. Leach said, what's a little unusual about this election is that there are four available seats with three different lengths of terms. Candidates are running for a specific length of term on the board. So the top four vote-getters are not going to get in. It is the top vote-getters for the specific term. There's an opening for one-two-year term. Candidates are Christian Freshour and Leah Straka. Can you raise your hands? Thank you. There are two openings for four-year terms. Candidates are Eric Bennett, Kimberly Wilkins, Patricia Madelinski, who can't be with us in person tonight, and writing candidate Jennifer Kiefer. Can you raise your hands, please? Thank you. There is one opening for a six-year term. Candidates for this are Crystal Root, Kylie Zink, and writing candidate Jacob Leclac. Did I say your name right? Okay. Could you guys raise your hands, please? Thank you. Okay, so there are several candidates. We'll try to keep this event to an hour and a half, which hopefully will include some time for questions from the audience. We ask the candidates to draw numbers before the event, which determine the order in which they will answer the questions in a round robin format. We will begin with Christian Freshour. I'm going to ask you a series of little brief questions, just so we can get to know you a little bit better.
Okay.
Okay. So what is your name?
Christian Freshour.
And your spouse's name?
Jacqueline Freshour.
And how many children do you have in school now or who have gone through the district?
I have three. I have Weston Freshour, who's in 11th grade, Kyler Freshour, who is in 7th grade, and Ayla, who is in 3rd grade.
Okay. And what's your job?
I'm partners in a couple construction companies and development companies, but my main focus is core mechanical. We do commercial piping and HVAC.
Okay. And what is your personal educational background?
I went to Eastern Michigan University, and I have a bachelor's degree in construction management and business.
Okay, thank you. Leah Straka, can you just say your name first, please? Okay, so what's your spouse's name? Are you married?
I am not married. My ex-husband will be here shortly to support me.
Well, that's nice. So do you have children in school now or who have gone through the district?
I do. Hannah Bilyer graduated in 16. Abigail Straka graduated in 21. Sarah Straka will graduate in 23. And Chloe is in 7th grade. I am currently homeschooling her.
Okay. And what is your job?
I am a corporate tax accountant.
Okay. And what is your personal educational background?
I have a bachelor's degree from Sienna Heights in Business Administration with an accounting focus.
Thank you. Move on to Kimberly Wilkins. Do you, are you married? What's your spouse's name?
Buster Wilkins.
Okay. And how many children do you have that are in school now or have gone through the district?
I have three children. Jasmine Tippi graduated in 2011. George Wilkins, 2014. Hear me now. Hello. Sorry. I have three children. Jasmine Tippi graduated in 2011. George Wilkins, 2014. And I have a daughter, Molly Wilkins, who is a sophomore.
Okay. And what's your job?
I am currently in patient relations and clinical risk.
Okay.
At a hospital.
All right. And what is your personal educational background?
I have an associate's degree in Business Administration with a concentration in medical administration.
Okay. And Crystal Root, are you married?
Yeah, I've been married for 20 years. Matthew Root.
Okay. And how many children do you have who are in school now or who have gone through the district?
Four children. Michael graduated in 2008. Cory graduated in 2010. Dennis graduated in 2020. And then I have a junior, Haley.
Okay. And what's your job?
I am a registered nurse.
And what is your personal educational background?
I was working on my master's of Nurse Practitioner in specializing in wound care until the pandemic hit, realized that I am not an online learner, and I have not went back yet.
Okay. And Kylie Zink, are you married?
I've been married to Kylie Zink for 12 years.
Okay. And how many children do you have who are now in school or who have gone through the district?
I have a son, Nolan, who's seven years old, and I have a daughter, Addie, who's four and a half.
Okay. And what's your job?
I'm a scientist slash program manager.
Okay. And what is your personal educational background?
I hold an associate's degree in veterinary technology from St. Rosenberg College.
Okay. And Eric Bennett, are you married?
I am, yes. Heather Bennett. We're coming up on 20 years quickly, so.
Okay. And how many children do you have in school now or who have gone through the district?
I've got four. So my oldest is a senior, Audrey, be graduating this spring. I've got a freshman, Evan, 7th grader, Allery, and a 2nd grader, Ella. So I have all three buildings covered right now.
Okay. And what is your job?
I'm the vice president of construction and municipal services at a local engineering, environmental, construction management company.
Okay. And what's your personal educational background?
Bachelor of Science in Construction Management from Fair State.
Okay. And Jacob Leclac, are you married?
Yes. My wife, Margot, is here. We've been married for, coming up on seven years now.
All right. And do you have children now in school or who have gone through the district?
Yes, our son Oliver is six, and he's in kindergarten.
Okay. And what is your job?
I'm a business analyst slash product owner for a company that does claims accumulation and analytics for Blue Cross.
Okay. And what's your personal educational background?
Attended the University of Toledo with a focus on Business Administration and Analytics.
Okay. And Jennifer Kiefer, are you married?
Yes, I've been married to Chris for 11 years.
Okay. And how many children do you have who are now in school or have gone through the district?
Our daughter Eleanor is in 4th grade, and our son Joseph is in 1st grade.
Okay. And what is your job?
I am an ordained pastor in the Evangelical Lutheran Church of America, and I currently serve as the assistant to the bishop for the Southeast Michigan Synod.
Okay. And what's your personal educational background?
I have a Bachelor of Arts degree from Kalamazoo College and a Master of Divinity from the Lutheran School of Theology in Chicago.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm with Patty Madelinski. Can I say Patty? Is that fine?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And she is running for the two four-year
Correct.
Okay, positions on the school board. Welcome, Patty.
Thank you.
I appreciate you taking the time and answering these questions. Sorry you had to miss the meet the candidate, but this is the next best thing.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah. All right. Let's start out with some basic information. Your name for the people that'll be watching, your spouse's name, number of children now in school or that have gone through the school district, what your current profession is, and then your professional educational background.
Okay. My name's Patty Madelinski. I'm married to Phil Madelinski. We've been married for almost 20 years. We have four children. Three have gone through Dundee schools and graduated already. Our fourth is a freshman in high school at Dundee. My job, I am a senior manager at PricewaterhouseCoopers. It's a large accounting firm. I support their audit function, but I do primarily computer programming. So it's kind of like a specialist role within the audit practice. My educational background, I graduated from Michigan State University with a bachelor's in accounting quite a few years ago, and I did my MBA at Ohio State University.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, it's nice to get to meet all of you. So now we will start with some questions. Our first question goes to Leah Straka to start with. What school or community organizations have you been a board member of or in active support of?
I have not been on a board before. I have been attending the school board meetings for about 18 months now, actively participating in them as well. I currently support my club, my Dundee Sportsman's Club. I am an active participant in those board meetings as well, and that's about it.
Okay. And I asked, have you been a board member of, but also in active support of means like, you know, an active member of a group. So everybody, we just are widening that up a little bit. So Kimberly Wilkins, what school or community organizations have you been a board member of or in active support of?
I have never been on a Board of Education position before, but when my two older children were in elementary, I was an active board. They called it PTO back then, not PTA. I was president of that organization for two years at Britain Maycon School, and I was the, basically did all the activities, games, raised money for the Britain PTO for five years. So I stayed active in that their entire elementary school years. I currently, I support the Bambusters. I volunteer for some of their home games, things of that nature, but, and I'm very active in our church.
Thank you. Crystal Root, what school or community organizations have you been a board member of or are in active support of?
I've been a football mom, a wrestling mom, a track mom, a football mom, a wrestling mom, a track mom, a wrestling mom, track shooting mom, swim and dive mom, a rugby mom. But one of the biggest things I can remember, my husband raised my儿女 reserve, and I was a very active member of that family, U.S. Army Family Reserve during COVID, so that was very exciting.
Thank you. Okay. Can you guys please make sure that you speak directly into your microphone and just put it right there in your face? It's fun. So Kylie Zink, what school or community organizations have you been a board member of or been in active support of?
Like Crystal, I'm also a soccer mom and a flag football mom. My kids are still a little younger, so I haven't been as long as she has. But I'm also involved in one of our employee research groups at work called Ascend, and I organize all of our events and get those going for site.
Thank you. Eric Bennett, what school or community organizations have you been a board member of or in active support of?
Yeah, thank you. First and foremost, as I'm still serving as the current president for the Dundee Junior Vikings organization that myself and a handful of other parents started seven years ago, I will be stepping down as the president at the end of the year, but continuing in the baseball, softball director position for another year or two while, until my children age out. But developing that program and seeing it get to where it's at now that many of you have children that are participating or grandchildren, it's pretty rewarding. But that one's been ongoing. It's time for me to step down from that and let others continue the vision for it. But also, just a couple other things. I sat on the facility subcommittee prior to being on the board for about three years. A big part of that was the strategic planning that went on initially that put together our 2017-2018 bond proposal. So I co-chaired that Vote Yes Committee prior to being on the board, so I could say Vote Yes back then, myself and one other parent. And as everybody knows, it went through with success. We're sitting here under new audio technology that was part of that bond, as well as many of the other projects that we just finished up, the parking lot out front. So those are all things direct with the school district. And then I'm also sitting as the Boy Scouts of America Running Waters Division Finance Chair through the end of this year. I've been doing that for three years, trying to help them out and get a little more exposure in Dundee. So I guess the last thing I would throw out is, pre-COVID, I was on the Monroe County Community College Construction Management Curriculum Advisory Committee, having a construction management degree and having started my schooling there. It's pretty near and dear to my heart, but they're going through a rebuild era right now. So I haven't said no to much, but every once in a while, there's something that I'll step aside, so.
Thank you. Jacob Leclac, what school or community organizations have you been a board member of or in active support of?
Before getting, or, yeah, before getting involved in, you know, some of the board meetings for Dundee, previously helped set up and run nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that focused on mission trips to Mexico. Have also helped out with some volunteer organizations at my job and previous jobs as well. And our son Oliver plays soccer for Dundee Community, so, you know, getting involved with that as well, too.
Okay, thank you. And Jennifer Kiefer, what school or community organizations have you been a board member of or in active support of?
I'm first a cheer mom and softball mom, and then I was, until this spring, the president of the Dundee Area Interfaith Council, which is a part of, it's comprised of the churches in Dundee, Ida, Azalea, and Petersburg. I've been a member of the Monroe County Suicide Prevention Commission and the Monroe County Great Start Collaborative. And for about five or six years, I've been a part of the Dundee Community Schools Health and Wellness Committee.
Thank you. And Christian Freshour, what school or community organizations have you been a board member of or in active support of?
Well, I've coached all my kids through team ball, soccer, football, flag football. I've coached some of your kids through those as well. In support of, we donate to pretty much everything that comes across our desk, as far as the community goes. I was vice, I am vice chair of the Planning Commission. I was a team member in the superintendent search and attended the site visits to help select Mr. Leach. Was on the 2022 Bond Committee for the bond we just passed. And while we had at the DBA through Crossroads Community Church, I sat in with that and helped with ideas with that. So lastly, on the Crossroads Community Church Site Committee, we're trying to do a church plant in Dundee.
Oh, thank you.
Were you a part of any school or community organizations in which you served as a member of that committee or group, or that you're currently active in or you support, at least if you're not a board member?
Yep. I was a member of the board on the Dundee Dragon Swim Club. I think I did that for three years during the time that my daughter swam. I was a treasurer on that board. It was an elected position. It was, I wouldn't call it similar to a school board, but it operates like a board of directors, just on a much smaller scale than a school board.
Anything else, whether it be professionally or?
I'm involved with a lot. My office is out of Detroit, my local office. We're a national practice, but I would report through the Detroit office. And I'm a member of a, like a women's and technology group through that. So we train women in the local industries about technology, and we go to high schools and middle schools to get them involved and interested in a technology-type career. So we do that. I've done that for a number of years. I also am involved in a leadership group with the firm. That is relatively new. So we have it because it started after COVID. So we have regular meetings just to talk about changes in the workforce from a leadership perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And now we'll have another question. We'll start with Kimberly Wilkins. What is your motivation for running for school board?
In 2020, a lot changed for everything, and that's when I became more involved in Dundee schools. The turning point, I think, for me was that I found the administration actually had staff members withhold information from me about our daughter. And while it was heartbreaking, it was also eye-opening. The school let it continue for eight months, so it made me get involved with what goes on in the school and what the school allows and withheld from parents. So I don't want this to happen to any other Viking parent. So that is one of the main reasons I decided to run for school board. They get in fear. Community members talk about danger of a child, but this wasn't the case with my child, and no one talked to my child. So if the school would have kept the parents informed, I, K, me, and my husband, then this wouldn't have happened with my child. And to this day, her still pay the price for a decision that a 15-year-old, or at the time, a 13-year-old made, and that community members still discuss her and speak about her. So that is my main focus of why I decided to run for board, is because I cannot allow parents to be left out of the loop of what's going on with their child in our school district.
Thank you. Okay, Crystal Root, what is your motivation for running for school board?
First and foremost, it's for the children. In September 2020, I went to the board to advocate for my child and the children above others. Then our previous superintendent began to introduce materials that I had some concerns with. So I continued my involvement. And then the bond was proposed, and so I continued my involvement with that, learning and educating myself on that. And then by the time it was time to run for school board, I realized how much I liked learning on what's going on. So that was my final decision to run for school board, is because I've been involved. I like it. I want to stay active. And even if I'm not elected, that's fine, because our board members will still continue to see me as the board meeting president.
Thank you. Kylie Zink, what is your motivation for running for school board?
My motivation for running for school board is my two young kids that are in the district. Like I said before, I have a seven-year-old and a four-year-old, so we are invested, and we are here for a while. So I'm really looking to get involved with the school, get involved with the community, similar to what some of the other constituents have said or the candidates. I have some concerns that have gone on in the district with the previous superintendent. So I want to make sure that some of those materials don't make it back into the school district, so.
Thank you. And Eric Bennett, what is your motivation for running for school board?
Just to continue what I've been doing for 20 months. I was fortunate to get appointed in a tough time, while a lot of tough decisions were being made when originally, I had looked at running in 2016. We had just kicked off the Dundee Junior Vikings. The timing didn't make sense. I had a lot of commitment there. At 2020, I had a big push, was planning to run. COVID hit. I had to focus on my business and keeping that afloat in light of everything else that was going on. And so for me, it really comes down to the community, down to the children. Anybody that knows me knows I, you know, I have the best of intentions. I can tell you, whether we're sitting up here, we're sitting in the school board table in the middle school library, it's not an easy position. I realize that. It's not a very rewarding position many times. But people got to stop pointing fingers and raise your hand and step up and sit up here and hopefully, you know, make those tough decisions that advance the community and advance our children and continue to make Dundee a great place to live, Dundee a destination, a district throughout the county and Southeast Michigan, so.
Thank you. Jacob Leclac, what is your motivation for running for school board?
My motivation for running for school board would be the focus on mental health and other resources for our students and teachers. When we first started paying attention to the school board meetings, there was a lot of back and forth about some of the resources being used. And we just wanted to make sure that we continue to support some of these resources for our teachers and students, so that, you know, we can continue to have a great school district. And I also want to, you know, also help bridge some of these gaps and pain points between, you know, the community and the district as well, too.
Thank you. Jennifer Kiefer, what is your motivation for running for school board?
The reason that my husband and I came to Dundee is I was called to serve St. John Lutheran Church over on Riley Street. And I have learned in the eight and a half years that I served in that congregation, not just to serve the church, but the community. And one of the ways that I have gotten involved beyond the Health and Wellness Committee and the Suicide Prevention Committee in the county, as well as the Great Start Collaborative, is really taking the time. My husband and I have really gotten to know our kids' teachers very well. Our son has some special needs, and we have had amazing, amazing support from the administrators, from the staff, from the teachers in the elementary school. And I am, I can, I am very grateful for them, and I want to do what I can to support them and to use my background with the Suicide Prevention Committee, the Great Start Collaborative, and the Health and Wellness Committee to continue to build on this really great school system, which is welcoming, and I think we can do better in that welcome for our kids.
Thank you. Christian Freshour, what is your motivation for running for school board?
I got a lot of motivations, but my foremost is my children. One in each school, your children. I think that just as a school as whole, we could do a lot better for everyone. We can all improve. You know, I want to continue continuity for Mr. Leach. For, you know, we hired him as a board. I was appointed last year, and I'd like to stay on the board and see that through. I don't feel like my work is done or our work is done yet. And I want to keep Dundee schools the same exceptional school that I graduated from, that my mom graduated from, that my grandparents graduated from, and that my great-grandparents graduated from. So it's a great school district, and I'd just like to see it stay the course.
Thank you. Leah Straka, what is your motivation for running for school board? Leah Straka, what is your motivation for running for school board?
Well, I've helped out in other areas, soccer, cheer, track, bowling. Wanted to get a little more involved in what was actually being taught. Transparency was a big issue with me because we were not allowed to see a curriculum that was being taught. Then I later found out Ms. Wilkins' situation. I did not know it was her at the time that I found out and I was appalled. And that was kind of a driving force for me. I think that now that we have Mr. Oss as the Assistant Superintendent, that's a great start. The few conversations that I've had with Leach, I think that could be a good start as well. But there's lots of work to be done. There's some trust that needs to be built back between the administration, the board, and parents. And I would like to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. I didn't mean to cut you off.
What is your motivation for running for school board?
I believe firmly of giving back to your community. I try to instill in all of my kids to volunteer. I think it's very, very important to volunteer. I feel like I've been very blessed in my life with my family, with my job, in my profession. So I believe strongly in giving back. I've always been one to volunteer, whether it was for the Dragons that I did at school, whether it's coaching and getting involved in my kids' functions, whether it's volunteering in the community for different things that are going on. So I, for years, I was a catechism teacher, actually up until last year. So I taught my kids at least one of the classes in catechism for over 15 years. And my daughter was confirmed, so she was the last of our four. So she was no longer in catechism. So that was like, took a big chunk of my time, like my volunteer time that I have outside of work and everything else going on. So I was looking for something else to give back to. And I thought this was a perfect opportunity for me to be part of the school board and to give back. And I thought it fits well with my background and I think I could offer a lot to the school district.
Thank you.
Okay, the next question is boards of education typically have, well, schools typically have an elected board of education and the professional administration. How much research have you done on becoming a board member? And please elaborate on the roles of the two different groups as you see it. We'll begin with Crystal Root.
So how much research have I done on becoming a board member? I've been to almost every single school board meeting since September of 2020. I've been to Wellness and Reproductive Health Committee. I've been to the Facilities Committee. I've spoken with our current president. I've talked to Mr. Leach. You know, you name it, I've done it to try and educate myself in becoming a board member and elaborate on the roles of the different groups. So the administration, they should be the ones that are identifying areas and/or are identifying issues or areas of improvement, ideas on how to make the improvements or resolve any issues that come up, and they should ensure that the policies are followed. The board should approve or deny the administration's requests or issues. They need to enact the policies that the administration follows. They need to monitor the budget and the curriculum. There is a chain of command and the Board of Education should enable the administrative staff to utilize that chain of command and respond, and the board should respond appropriately as needed.
Thank you. Kylie Zink, how much research have you done on becoming a board member? And please elaborate on the roles of the Board of Education and the professional administration.
So I did quite a bit of research. This was not something that I took lightly. I started going to board meetings in, I would say, probably early 2022. So after getting involved and doing tons of research on the MASB website and talking to some other board members that are sitting, I made the decision to go ahead and run. As far as the differences between the school board and the administration, I think it's a really a checks and balances kind of system, right? So, you know, we're trying to make sure that policies are followed, budgets are followed, and making sure that everybody is doing what they're supposed to be.
Thank you. Eric Bennett, how much research have you done on becoming a board member, even though you are a board member right now? Could you maybe please elaborate on the roles of the two different groups, the Board of Education and the professional administration as you see it?
Yep, sure. No, and just like Ms. Zink and Ms. Root said, I very similarly started attending meetings back in 2017, 2018, 2019, attending with all of you in 2020 and getting more engaged as I went forward, just trying to figure out what it really meant, what was, what are the guidelines around it? And when I was appointed, I was fortunate enough to go through the MASB school board training, new school board member training, and it's eye-opening. It really is. And some of the things that you don't think about being on the school board and, you know, and just acting as a board, acting as an individual, right? What, you know, your rights that you have and balancing all of that. So I try to kind of look at the school on a three-tiered system, students, administration, school board. You know, and it's, I'm sorry, students and teachers, administration, school board. And students and teachers, teachers are responsible day-to-day, hour-by-hour. The administration responsible hour-by-hour, day-by-day, and then add week-by-week. And then you start looking at hour-by-hour, day-by-day, week-by-week, month-by-month. And that's where the school board comes in and looking at what is the policy procedure? Do we have, do we have policy and procedure in place? What is that? Is accountability there? What is the checks and balances? And being there to support as needed when challenging decisions come before the board as well. So it's definitely a little bit of a balancing act, but I think everybody's got their own roles. And going through, like I said, the MASB training was quite helpful and it's available for anybody. You can find the documents online if you have interest, so.
Thank you. Jacob Leclac, how much research have you done on becoming a board member? And please elaborate on the roles of the Board of Education and the professional administration.
I've done quite a bit of research on becoming a board member from attending and watching the board meetings to, you know, emailing and talking with current and even former board members as well. And also doing some of the MASB trainings and documentation online as well, too. So I, you know, the board, you know, is the governor and the guidance part of the school district. And, you know, they should be the ones setting the policies and helping direct, you know, where the school district should be going, helping, you know, set the mission and vision of the school. You know, then the administration is helped to support the students and teachers and help, you know, enforce some of those policies that the board, you know, has to vote on.
Thank you. And Jennifer Kiefer, how much research have you done on becoming a board member? And can you please talk to us about the roles of the two different groups, the Board of Education and the professional administration?
Thank you, Tanya. I began attending virtual board meetings in July or August of 2020 when they were rolling out the back-to-school plan. I have attended meetings, again, I've watched meetings I couldn't attend. I've attended and spoken at meetings. I've spoken with board members. I had opportunity last summer to talk to Mr. Manuzak while he was still with us, as well as some of the MASB trainings that were held earlier this year. I see the board as an oversight, a governing body of the school, and also an intermediary between the community and the administration. It is a relationship-building body that works to set policy, ensure policy is followed, to follow the budgets and such. But a big part of that is also that relationship-building piece so that we can have that trust between the community and the schools as we work with the administration, again, in another partnership. The administration then handles the day-to-day stuff, the nitty-gritty, works with the teachers and has that oversight of the day-to-day behind-the-scenes stuff that we don't see very much of.
Thank you. Christian Freshour?
Yeah, I think, well, first of all, 2020, I started watching the school board meetings virtually. Started getting more involved with those, checking them out. Talked to many board members. And then when I was appointed, I was on the fence of whether it's something I wanted to take on right now or not. And I really thought about it a lot and said, yeah, this is something I want to do, so I pursued it. Did a lot of the trainings, a lot of the online trainings. And for me, the biggest part was just being part of the board, being, having on-the-job training. You know, all the seminars and stuff are nice, but it's like college. You didn't learn a whole lot till you actually sat in a seat and started doing the job. So I've learned a lot over the past year and I'm looking forward to more. As far as the school's, school board's policy or role, you know, our number-one employee is the superintendent. You know, that's our sole employee. And so I think, you know, managing that well, having a great relationship, two-way relationship with Mr. Leach is huge. And then he can, you know, manage from there down. Like everyone else said, administrators, building principals, they manage the day-to-day stuff and the school board's big picture, looking for the vision of Dundee.
Thank you. Leah Straka, how much research have you done on becoming a board member? And can you please tell us what you think the roles of the two different groups are? That school board and the administration?
Like I said before, I started attending school board meetings in early 2021. Became, becoming very vocal, I guess you could say. I started watching YouTube videos. I watched videos on the Michigan Association of School Board. I attended a seminar on becoming a board member as well. I've done a lot of reading of our school board's policies just to prepare myself in case I'm elected, so I can use those to my advantage. As far as the different parties involved, you have your administration that usually goes to your superintendent and your superintendent brings that to the board. Board helps out with, within the policies of hiring, getting more teachers, things of that nature. But I would like to bring the board back to remembering that they work for the community as well.
Thank you. Kimberly Wilkins, how much research have you done on becoming a board member? And what can you tell us about the roles of the school board and the professional administration as you see it?
Almost like everyone else, I started attending board meetings in 2020. And I see the board as, yeah, the governing body of Dundee Community Schools where they set the policies and the procedures that, you know, need to be followed by the principal and the superintendents. But I also believe that the board should have the community input and involvement of parents to set those policies and ask questions and find out what the community is looking for in their policies. As for administration, it is like the superintendent and the principals, but I think it also goes down, all the way down to the director of the bus drivers. They all have a key role in maintaining and making sure that Dundee Community Schools are ran appropriately and properly and that our staff is happy and, you know, they're getting what they need to do their jobs effectively. I forgot the other question.
Thank you.
Board of Education's typically schools have an elected board of education and a professional administrative team. How much research have you done on becoming a board member? And please elaborate on the roles of the two different groups, the Board of Education and the administrators.
So I have done research on becoming a board member and what it means. I've attended school board meetings and have certainly gotten more involved in that process than I was probably 10 years ago when my older kids were in school. I understand how the two groups work. So somebody like you is part of the administration, superintendent, and superintendent. They work with the Board of Education. The board is the one that, I believe, sets the policies. And then the administration works to enforce the policies or to enact them. So very important that the two groups work together, even though they're separate from each other. But I believe they should have a great working relationship in order to get things achieved.
Thank you.
All right, our next question will go to Kylie Zink first. And the question is, what would you like to see changed in the district? And how do you envision your role in that change?
Truthfully, I think this is a tough one. I think we're really lucky in Dundee that we have a lot of great teachers and staff. One thing that I'd really like to make sure is that we're offering competitive wages and good benefits so that we can retain those teachers and that great staff and that we can become a destination district for new talent. So I think that's definitely a big goal, is making sure that we have good staff. Like Ms. Wilkins said, having good bus drivers, a good director of the bus drivers. I truthfully, at this point, I don't think there's anything that I would change right now.
Thank you. Eric Bennett, what would you like to see changed in the district? And how do you envision your role in that change?
I would say I agree somewhat with Ms. Zink. And we're very fortunate in calling ourselves Dundee Vikings in what we have, but there's always room for improvement. I don't think there's anything that we necessarily need to change, per se, but I think there's a couple of things that we can continue to improve on. One is our communication, the continuity and effectiveness of our communication from the teachers to the administration, principals, out to the parents. As a parent, that's one thing drives me nuts is that elementary communicates one way, middle school communicates another way, high school communicates another way. I've spoke to Mr. Leach about it. I've spoke to the principals about it. You know, that's something that I think we need to continue to improve on and look for ideas that may be brought forward from teachers and principals, right? You know, to Mr. Leach and to hopefully to the school board if there needs to be something brought to in front of us. The one other thing I would say, you know, and that, I don't want to throw that out there without the background that that is underway and it is being worked on. And, you know, I was fortunate as being one of the board members to sit on and on the 2023 planning session. And communication is number one. So that is, it will get attention, whether I'm on the board or not. It's the number-one priority for moving into 2023 as of May of 2022. The one other thing, just effective community engagement. It's a challenge. We have nearly 2,000 students and I'm very thankful for everyone that's here, but I'd like to see five times as many people here. People need to get engaged and, you know, like I said, get their voices heard, reach out. And it takes, it takes the community to run this district. And we do have hired staff. We have hired teachers. We have the best teachers around. We have a great staff, but at the same time, we got to have all of us that step up and help support that. There's a lot of volunteerism, volunteer hours that have to happen to put this, you know, to pull off Dundee Community Schools. And I think the community engagement can really help mend some of the fences and the challenges that we've, that we've had over the last couple of years. challenges that we've had over the last couple of years, you know, and bringing the people together and, you know, whether you're breaking bread or solving something over the board table or, you know, hosting a fundraising event, that type of thing can really bring people together that might be, have different opinions on things but can understand and respect one another, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jacob Leclac, what would you like to see changed in the district? And how do you envision your role in that change?
So to echo pretty much what everyone else has said so far, you know, one of the reasons my wife and I chose Dundee was because of the, you know, amazing school district that we do have here. So, you know, we are very fortunate. You know, there's not, you know, a whole lot that I would like to see changed either, except for, you know, the, you know, communication and some of the transparency as well, you know, could definitely be better worked on, for sure. You know, we do need to bridge some of the gaps between, you know, the district and the community. The community should have, you know, a large input and say into, you know, what is going on and happening within the district. So, you know, I would definitely work to help, you know, bridge some of those gaps and then make sure that we are getting more community engagement, you know, into the district and, you know, making sure that, you know, we, in the future, hopefully have more people here at events like this.
Thank you. So Jennifer Kiefer, what would you like to see changed in the district? And what would you envision your role to be in that change?
One of the things that I've noticed going about our buildings is, particularly the elementary and middle school, is being older construction, they are not fully accessible. And I found out from Mr. Bennett last, was it last week already? That children who are wheelchair users in the elementary school cannot access the library. And that's not okay. And I'm really glad that the bond proposal passed, and I would like to see, as we move forward with the implementation of that bond proposal, that our school buildings become fully accessible to every child in our district. Because when every child has a chance to get to the start line, every child has a chance to succeed. I would also like to see this accessibility through the ways that children are represented, through printed materials and positive representation. We should be teaching children the positive representation of all the cultures they come from. I am so glad to see the increase in diversity in the Dundee schools, uh, community schools. We need to teach these cultures in a wonderful way and celebrate the diversity that has come into our community so that we can continue to learn about each other better and build these relationships and come together as a stronger community.
Thank you. Christian Freshour, what would you like to see changed in the district? And how do you envision your role in that change?
I think it's more of improvement than change. I'll just echo everyone else as far as that goes, because I do think that we have a great school system and great administrators, but I'd like to see better relationships amongst the board, the administration, and the community members. At times, there's times that we need to compromise, and, you know, we've got, some people are way over here and some people are way over here, and, you know, in the end, we all want what is best for the kids. And so we need to have those conversations and come to the table and figure it out. I'd also like to have more effective avenues for community feedback. You know, we send out surveys, we don't get a ton of feedback. We've got four or five parents that show up at every school board meeting. We get a lot of feedback on Facebook and other sites from people behind the keyboard, but, you know, real, real things, real change happens when you come face-to-face and work out your issues.
Thank you. Leah Straka, what would you like to see changed in the district? And how do you envision your role in that change?
Well, I think I'd like to reiterate pretty much what everybody else said. We have awesome teachers. I believe we have a good school board. We have amazing parents. It's just getting everybody on the same page. And we do all want what's best for our kids, we just have different ways that we think it should be done. And we need to respect that. If you have something that is affecting your household or going on in your household or an issue that you need to address in your household, that's where it should take place. It's not the school's job to have those hard conversations with your children. That's parents' jobs. So I think if we could come together and communicate on that and just respect one another and the different beliefs that everyone has, that would be great.
Thank you. Kimberly Wilkins, what would you like to see changed in the district? And how do you envision your role in that change?
Basically, kind of what everyone else said, we need some open communication and transparency amongst the, you know, administration and with parents. I believe 100% that parents need to be involved in everything that goes on with their child every single time, no matter what. And if that doesn't occur, it causes a loss of trust a parent would have with their school and not just with the administration. It breaks that trust with the teachers and the community members. So I believe 100% that parental involvement needs to be sought out every single time, no matter what. We are actually doing very well, but we need to stay proactive and anticipate issues before they arise, such as our lack of classrooms that, and we had to get a portable, and unfortunately due to still probably problems with COVID, it can't get set up yet, or we ran into issues with getting that open.
Crystal Root, what would you like to see changed in the district? And how do you envision your role in that change?
Working microphones? No. There? Okay. So what would I like to see changed in the district? First and foremost, I would love to see our drivers, our bus drivers, back as district employees. I think if we had district employees, if the bus drivers were district employees, there would be less turnover. Another thing, like everybody said, the consistent communication. But, and I wouldn't say it's a change, but continued physical accountability, especially with inflation and the price of everything going up. And I would love to stay involved in the bond projects that are coming up. Thank you.
What would you like to see changed in the district? And how do you envision your role in that change if you're elected to the school board?
So there are a couple of things, I think, that are top of mind for me. The first one being, I went to the last board meeting, I saw the assessment scores for the district. I'm not sure what they were pre-COVID, but I would say I was taken aback by the scores, not necessarily for Dundee in general, but just as a whole, how the schools had fared on their standardized assessment, just in the basics, you know, reading, math, whatever. I think generally speaking, we were below 50% at grade level. And that is, to me, the most important thing, to make sure that we improve in that area. I know, you know, people have different feelings about standardized testing and what those numbers mean, what those numbers mean, but it's really probably the best assessment that we have for how we're doing and how the kids are doing in school. So I think working to get those scores up and what we can do to help kids and make sure that all kids are succeeding is the most important thing that we have in front of us right now. A couple of other things are the mileage that was renewed. I think we have a lot of money and we need to make sure that we're spending it appropriately. There are a lot of priorities that we have for the school, so we need to make sure that we're doing a good job in being fiscally responsible with that. And lastly is, it kind of goes together with how we're going to address the growth in our school and how we're going to accommodate everybody. So we have, obviously, the portables for the younger kids, and we need a more permanent solution for that, and it's only going to grow, right? I don't think we're going to get smaller in size anytime in the future, so we need to address that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, this one, we will start with Eric Bennett. Not everyone comes from the same background as you. People have different economic situations, religious beliefs, and cultural traditions, just to name a few. As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what you think is best for you, your family, and your friends to do what's best for all the students and the district as a whole. Describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, and your personal beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
Thank you. Yeah, it's definitely a balancing act, and you're not always going to, you may walk in with your personal beliefs, and then hopefully you've got an open-minded, humble, caring, inquisitive approach to things where you're able to, you know, absorb information, ask questions, self-educate. I can tell you, I've sat on a lot of boards and a lot of committees, personal, professional. I have never done as much self-studying. I didn't even like school when I was in school, but I can tell you, I've never done as much self-studying as I have done on the school board. It is an incredible, incredible commitment if you want to go in and be prepared. And, you know, regardless of what the topics that are coming before the school board, your vote matters every single time, and you owe it to every person that puts you in that seat to educate yourself, reach back out to some of the people. And whether you agree, disagree personally, it's extremely important to understand where the community sits. And, you know, I'm very proud to say I've been here 16, going on 17 years, and, you know, I appreciate Dundee for what it was when I grew up in Petersburg and graduated from Summerfield, and we had nothing on M50, and now what we have here today. And it's a balancing act. Some want to stay what we always were, some want to grow and, you know, be the next urban area, but there's definitely challenges to that, and it's just like the question says, a balancing act, but it comes down to self-education, open-mindedness, and really having those discussions that, you know, you're going to be uncomfortable, asking people, well, what do you mean by that? Or I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. And then finding those resources to make those decisions, so.
Thank you. So Jacob Leclac, as we know, everyone comes from a different background, but sometimes you have to put your personal aside to do what's best for the district as a whole. How would you balance community concerns, student needs, and your personal beliefs to decide how to vote on an issue?
Well, I think, you know, students, you know, need to come first, and we need to make sure that they're, you know, part of a community, that they feel safe and welcome, you know, at school. But we also need to recognize and understand that, you know, parents have rights to also know what's going on, and, you know, balancing those two and, you know, all the other, you know, issues that, you know, will be going on through the district. It's going to be challenging, you know, so, you know, keeping an open mind and making sure that you're doing, you know, your research and researching both sides of, you know, the story or whatever may be going on is, you know, is going to be critical and important in making a decision. Because, you know, the decisions that will be made, you know, do affect, you know, everyone, you know, and that includes, you know, everyone from these, you know, different economic situations and everything. So it's, it won't be easy, but, you know, I look forward to the challenge and making sure that, you know, I can help make some of these challenging decisions.
Thank you. Jennifer Kiefer, everybody comes from a different kind of background, economics, religious, cultural, what have you. As a board member, you will have to put aside what you may think is best for you and your family and your friends to do what's best for the community, school as a whole district, and the student needs, and how can you balance all those things with your personal beliefs to make the best decision?
Thank you. One of the mantras I've stolen from the Apple TV show Ted Lasso is stay curious, not judgmental. And it has been a gift to me. As I go into my current job, I go from church to church just about every Sunday, I'm in a different congregation, meeting different people from different backgrounds, and that curiosity has really helped me and I believe can help me as a board member. We always need to put students first, that is the motto of this district, students first. I believe we need to listen to our teachers and the administration, we need to listen to the community. And at the end of the day, when we sit down and think about and make decisions, the board needs to sit down and come to these conversations with the understanding that we're not always going to have the best idea, and that sometimes the best ideas come from places that are completely unexpected. So always having an open mind and an open heart and being ready to ask more questions and be curious, I think is a good way to go about that.
Thank you. Christian Freshour, will you spare me the word salad that I'm kind of screwing up here?
I wanted to hear it one more time, but, all right. Yeah, I think, I think the biggest thing is being open-minded, getting, you know, we're elected by the community for the community's children, for the community's school, and inevitably, you're going to piss somebody in the community off, all right? That's going to happen when you sit on this board. I think the biggest thing is, you need to stay open-minded, you need to speak with everyone in the community. I got a close friend in the audience right now, and we spoke for almost an hour the other night. We agree on nearly nothing, but we hear each other out. She listens to my viewpoints, I listen to hers, and at the end of the day, sometimes she changes my thought process. I don't think I ever changed hers, but, you know, just getting that feedback, you know, just having that communication. And I think that needs to come from everybody, not just the groups that you typically align with or your buddies that you typically talk to and get advice from. We're a community, it needs to come from everybody. So I would just say, listen to their concerns, listen to their teachers, come in open-minded, and ultimately make the best decision that you feel that you can make for your community.
Thank you. Leah Straka, how would you balance?
You don't need to reread it.
Okay, thanks.
Basically, I would like to say that my belief is children come first. So I promise that if I'm elected, all of my decisions will be based on children first. If something is brought to me, I will do the due diligence, I will do the research, and if it is necessary and beneficial to our children, I will fully support it.
Thank you. Kimberly Wilkins, can you tell us how you'll balance everything to come to a decision?
Every child is unique, and, you know, they, we have to treat them that way, and so, of course, every decision that the board makes will be based on what is best for our children. I am a person that I do not jump into decisions lightly. I mean, I made four pages of notes on stuff that I'm not even sure were going to be the questions tonight, because I need to do my research and I need to ask questions and make sure that I have all the information before any informed decision is made. And as for my personal beliefs, I have no doubt that I would do what is best for the child and for the committee, or, I'm sorry, the community, and what, you know, they want. We need to involve the community more. community and what, you know, they want. We need to involve the community more on decisions that we do make for our children, you know, with surveys. And I know we don't get, in the past, we haven't gotten a lot of response from them. But I do believe the community is a very important tool using to make decisions that we make for our children. So, yep.
Thank you. Crystal Rutt.
All right. So as a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what you may think is best for you, your family, and your friends to do what is best for all students and the district as a whole. That's kind of a philosophical question, right? The common good versus individualism. I'll give you an example. During the pandemic, the decision was made that for the common good, we would stay on our two days a week schooling. But now we're coming to realize that the common good wasn't so good. And where the U.S. Department of Education just released 116 million to help fund mental health professionals in the school. So the common good wasn't good. It wasn't individualized. Describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, and your personal beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue. Listen, listen to the stakeholders, the staff, the students, the community. Educate myself, research topics, and compromise. But at the end of the day, it's a seven-member board and majority wins. So again, common good versus individualism. Thank you.
Okay. Kylie Zink, how would you balance all of the different factors when it comes to making a decision?
Gotcha. I mean, it's definitely a balancing act. Everybody has a different view on what they think is best for their kids. And ultimately, I think that's a great thing. Hearing different views and understanding what people want for their children will ultimately help the board, I think, make a decision that is good for everyone, for the entire community and the kids. I think sometimes meeting in the middle is necessary to bridge that gap. I think one of the things that I try to keep in mind when I'm having a conversation is what would change my mind on this topic and keeping that in mind. So yeah, I think hearing all sides is beneficial to driving decisions on what's best for the community and what's best for the kids.
Thank you.
And I think you kind of answered some of that in this next one, but it's a good, you know, you brought it up. Not everyone comes from the same background as you. People have different economic situations, religious beliefs, cultural traditions, just to name a few. As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what you may think is best for you, your family, and your friends to do what's best for all the students and the district as a whole. Describe how you will balance community concerns, student needs, and your personal beliefs to determine how to vote on an issue.
Yeah, this is, this is a great question. I think I've gotten very good at filtering out the noise. I think if we filter out the noise that's going on, we would understand that we probably see eye to eye more than what we realize. I just, I think there's a lot of noise sometimes and it's just distracting from the issue at hand. That said, I work for probably one of the most diverse organizations in the country. We probably have, I guess, underrepresented group that's of employees that's probably ranges close to 50%. So I work with people, not only in the U.S., that are from very diverse backgrounds, but I have a global role as well. So I'm dealing with individuals from all different countries because we have offices all over the world for our firm that we're working with. So I'm very accustomed to working with people from diverse backgrounds. And I think that even if you don't have the same, I guess, perspective as somebody else, you can learn a lot from listening to other people's perspective. Even though you don't agree with somebody, you can always learn and understand their point of view. Instead of being reactive and somebody's position on things that might be differed than yours, if you sit down and have a conversation with them, I think you can get a lot accomplished. So I plan to just talk to people. I'm very open to talking to anybody, people that view things the same as I do and people that don't, and just listening to their side of the story and understanding what their concerns are. And I'm not a political person by nature, so I don't have an answer. Granted, I'm not coming in here to thinking that, oh, we need to, you know, necessarily, I'm upset about, you know, anything in particular, or think anything in particular needs to change. So it's just listening to what the community wants and understanding what is best for the kids.
Thank you.
Now, in the interest of time, we're going to keep this really short. Starting with Jacob Leclerc, I'm not asking you for answers, okay? But what are the one or two top priorities you have as a new board member?
I think community engagement and communication, you know, would be one of the, you know, top priorities for sure. You know, one of the things that I've learned in the last year, year and a half, in attending some of the board meetings and, you know, watching them online and seeing some of the feedback within the community, it's, there seems to be, you know, a major pain point there. And I think it, you know, should be a top priority for sure.
Jennifer Kiefer, what are the top one or two priorities you have as a new board member?
Relationship building is definitely number one. Getting to know the teachers, asking how I and the school board can be helpful, asking those same questions out in the community, and just getting out there, getting to know folks, and to see where they're at so that we can grow those relationships together.
Okay. Christian Freshour, what are the top one or two priorities you have as a new board member this time?
The first one is to help our newly hired superintendent, Mr. Leach, be the most successful superintendent that he can be, help him out as much as possible. Second would be fiscal responsibility for the school, especially with the bond money, you know, $21.7 million is not a drop in the bucket. And we just need to make every bit of that money go as far as it can go. So.
Okay. Leah Straka?
Well, I'm an accountant, so budget. With what happened at Mylan today, a priority I would have to be would be student safety. I would like to know if there's been like a security assessment done. If it has, where do we rank? If it hasn't, we need to get it done. And then go along with budget. Our teachers are great. That's not an issue. And we know we all want them to get paid. But there's other people in this building and the other two buildings that are just as important to our kids. Our bus drivers, our custodial staff, our cafeteria staff. And we need to look at retaining them and making sure that they can make a decent living helping us out and working for our kids.
Thank you. Kimberly Wilkins, briefly, what are the top one or two priorities you have as a new board member?
Making sure that there is open communication, transparency, and parent involvement would be my top priority. And then it would also be the budget because we did just have that bond passed. And there's a lot of improvements that need to get done. And we need to make sure that our tax dollars are being spent to make the school a better facility for our students.
Thank you. Crystal Rutt, what are the top one or two priorities you would have as a new board member?
I would say my top one would be building the trustful relationship with Mr. Leach. I lost the trust of our previous superintendent, so that would be one of the biggest things. And then the second thing would be, like Christian said, with the bond projects coming up, physical accountability.
Okay, thank you. Kylie Zink, what are the top one or two priorities you would have as a new board member?
My two main ones are communication and transparency, making sure that the parental, that parents have rights with their kids and that they know everything that's going on. The other one that I have is education, making sure that we're staying focused on the basics like reading, writing, and math. And just to throw out another one, fiscal responsibility with the big bond that just passed.
Thank you. Eric Bennett, what are your top one or two priorities?
I think pretty similar to everyone else, the implementation of the strategic plan for 2023 and improving communications, ensuring that happens, not necessarily doing it, but ensuring it happens. The fiscal responsibility side of things that goes along with, not only the bond, but with the spending and the anticipation of, you know, we have got a slug of kids coming through our elementary right now that have to go through the middle school, that have to go through this building, and whether or not we're ready for that, and what that continues to look like, and try to be forward-focused in planning as much as we can. We can only plan so much. The state's kind of got handcuffs on you to some degree where you can only, you can only pre-build to a certain percentage. And we're going through that a little bit and educating ourselves as to what that looks like. It, you know, it'd be nice to have, you know, build it and they will come approach, but that's not allowed. So we have to be very nimble and fiscally responsible, not only with bond dollars, but with our general fund dollars that allow us to make improvements so that hopefully we don't see portables out on the grass area anymore.
Thank you. Thank you.
Similar question, but what are the one or two top priorities you have as a new board member?
Yep. So I mentioned this briefly. There are a couple. The first one is the standardized test. That concerned me when I saw it last week, when I saw those results. We need to get better in those areas and make sure that more of our students are at grade level or above and succeeding and giving them what they need to succeed. Making sure that we're overseeing the usage of the mileage was the other one. And then goes together with the expansion of our student population and how we're going to address all aspects of that, not just space.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So this is our final question from me. People aren't expected to know everything when they are first elected to school board. The good news is, training is being offered for new members of the Board of Education and as a refresher for current board members, presented by the Michigan Association of School Boards. If elected, will you be willing to participate? You can just, as a group, anybody not want to participate? Okay, we'll ask you individually. Jennifer Kiefer, would you participate?
Absolutely.
Christian?
Yes.
Leah Straka?
Absolutely.
Kimberly Wilkins?
Absolutely.
Crystal Rutt?
You got it.
Kylie Zink?
Yes.
Eric Bennett?
Yes.
Jacob Leclerc?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay.
People aren't expected to know everything they need to know when they first are elected to a school board. And the good news is, there's training that's offered for new board members and the entire Board of Education as a refresher for those current board members, which is provided by the Michigan Association of School Boards. If elected, will you be willing to participate in these workshops and training sessions?
Oh, absolutely. This is one area that I was really excited to hear about because while I've done research on school boards and how they operate and that I by no means would consider myself an expert, and I think I have a lot to learn on it. So any training that I can get on it, whether I do it on my own time or it's something that's actually offered through the position, I'd be more than happy to take advantage of that.
Okay. So, Mr. Leach, do we have any questions from the audience?
No.
Okay. I'm going to try to keep that short, too. All right. Okay. Well, we'll do it this way. Because a couple of these are the same, but they're worded differently. This is the question, and I guess we're supposed to start with, goodness, I lost track. Wouldn't you know? We could start with Christian Freshour because that's where we started the last, the very first question. Do you believe it is appropriate for school libraries to provide books to students, especially without parental knowledge, of books that describe graphic and sometimes violent sexual acts? And do you believe it is possible to represent marginalized groups without this type of content?
This is an awesome question that we hear every single day on the news and everything else. And I think that certain content does not have a space in our school system. So I would like to see a better vetting system. I need to know, better understand how we vet the books. But I think some teachers, some students, some parents, maybe not students right away, parents and administrators need to be involved along with school board members. So, no, I don't believe that some of that stuff needs to be in the schools.
Okay, thank you. Leah Straka, briefly, people?
I do not believe any of those books should be in our schools. Anything that depicts a sexual act with a child in an erotic way is sickening. Anything that has two children or a child and an adult, absolutely not. If you want something for children of color or children of different backgrounds, Tunnel Twins is great. This right here are courageous heroes. Half of this book is African-Americans from our history. That's the kind of book that you want in the library, not the other ones.
Thank you. Kimberly Wilkins?
I do not believe any books that are of sexual nature need to be in our school system. There needs to be a better way that these books are brought in and an easier way to get them removed if they are found in our schools. They are, I have already submitted four, no, I'm sorry, eight books that need to get reviewed for removal. And they are going through the proper process. So yes, I am diligently looking to get the worst of the worst books out of our schools because they do not belong here.
Thank you. Crystal Rutt?
Can you repeat that question one more time?
Sure. Do you believe it is appropriate for school libraries to provide books to students, especially without parental knowledge, of books that describe graphic and sometimes violent sexual acts? And do you believe it is possible to represent marginalized groups without this type of content?
Sexually graphic books, no, they should not be in this school. There is the policy on how to get it removed, like Kim said. Rating system would be nice, having something. I don't believe we have any controversial books that are, as part of the curriculum, we're talking more like library books, I'm assuming. Parental approval, a rating system, stuff like that. But no, they should not be in the libraries.
Thank you. Kylie Zink, would you like to speak to this topic?
These books don't belong in our schools. There's no educational value to these. There's definitely ways to represent marginalized communities without graphic sexual depictions. We need to find a better rating system for these books to get into our libraries and a better review process to get them out if they somehow do get in.
Thank you. Eric Bennett? Thank you. Eric Bennett, would you like to speak to this topic?
I was gonna keep it short and sweet and just say ditto.
That's great.
So, but I, improved process for addition and removal. You know, additional, oops, addition, evaluation and removal. I, I think that's what it comes down to. There's more of a focus on it now. Whether I believe it's, they should be there or not is irrelevant. People think that they should or should not be there, and we need to entertain what that looks like and make the appropriate measures to see that change takes place if needed.
Thank you. Jacob Blacklock, would you like to speak to this issue?
I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm sure there are, you know, some books that definitely, you know, shouldn't belong, you know, in, in a school library. But, you know, we should also be taking a more close review and, you know, with these books, but we should also be trusting our teachers and librarians as well, who are making, you know, some of these decisions with, with which books are brought in.
Thank you. And Jennifer Kiefer, would you like to speak to this topic?
Sure. It's a difficult thread, or it's a difficult needle to thread, because the Bible's a pretty controversial, actually, if you read it. There is some, some graphic stuff in there. We need to trust our librarians and our teachers. We do need to have books vetted, absolutely. Stuff that is not appropriate for the age level of our children does not belong in the libraries. But we have hired really good librarians and teachers who know what they're talking about. I consult our, my kids' teachers regularly to see what kind of content and what kind of book series are appropriate for my children. And one of the cool things about being in a small town and being small class sizes is that when we ask those questions, our teachers and our librarians know exactly what is a good book to recommend for our children that is age appropriate and of proper content.
Thank you.
Do you believe it is appropriate for school libraries to provide books to students, especially without parent knowledge, of books that describe graphic and sometimes violent sexual acts? And do you believe it is possible to represent marginalized groups without this type of content?
I guess I don't understand how that content would or would not represent any marginalized group. That said, do I support that material being? It, I mean, it depends what we're talking about, really. I have seen some of the content that she, he or she is probably referring to, and no, I don't think some of that has any place in our public school libraries. And it depended, the content and the nature of it depends on the school. Are we talking the high school library? Are we talking elementary school library? I think there are things that might be appropriate for high school that are definitely not appropriate for elementary. That said, I think parents definitely should have a, if there's something that's concerning to their child, I think they absolutely have a say in, you know, what content is in there and what their kids have access to. So I, I, I think it depends. I don't want to say it's on a book-by-book basis, but I'd have to evaluate the content and what we are talking about to determine whether or not I feel it would be appropriate for the school. I honestly don't see how it's any different than letting my child deciding whether or not they can go watch a movie, you know, whether it's rated R, rated, I mean, all the movies have ratings on them. You know, if we have to move in a direction, that's, that's what we do with the books in our library. I don't like the idea of going that direction, but if that's what we have to do, then it might be an option. And then parents can either sign off and whether they're comfortable, you know, rate some of the books. And if parents aren't comfortable, then, then they can say, no, my child's not allowed to sign that book out of the library. But I think parents definitely have a say in what their children can be exposed to at school. That said, I don't think anybody, I'm surprised that books like that would be in our school, but.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, we are going to be brief about this. Okay. I would like a brief closing statement from each candidate. And as you get ready to do this, just think about what you would say if you could go knock on every door in the school district, because this is essentially your opportunity to do that. We'll begin with Leah Straka.
I would like to use a couple words to describe me. I can be tenacious at times, passionate. I'm very strong-willed. But know that if I'm on the board, I will fight for every child. I'm not one to back down on too much of anything. My ex-husband is in the back of the room, and he can contest to that. But I will be here for you. I will listen to you, and I will fight for your children.
Thank you. Kimberly Wilkins, do you have a closing statement?
I am running for the board specifically because I do believe in our school, and I want the best for our students. I want their future to be an ultimate success. We have from preschool to high school, different points of success, but all of the individuals are on the same path. They want to be successful beyond their youthful education. I do want to ensure that all the parents' voices are heard and respected, and acknowledge that they are the most important decision-maker of their child's education.
Thank you. Crystal Root, do you have some closing comments for us?
So I want you guys to know that this, being in a spot like this, is way outside of my comfort zone. So if I'm willing to do this for my child, I'm willing to do it for everyone's child. This is the next step for me with the level of involvement that I've been in. But either way, if I, if I don't get elected, I'll still continue on, because this is what I like to do. I appreciate everybody's support, and to be perfectly honest, November 8th cannot get here soon enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Kylie Zink, would you like to make a closing statement?
I just want to say that while, yes, we all have different views, I am willing to talk to anybody regarding my views or your views. Like I said before, during conversations, I like to hear, tell me something that will change my mind. So if anybody out there honestly wants to have a cup of coffee, meat for lunch, something like that, please let me know. I stand for parental rights, open communication, fiscal responsibility. I guess that's it.
Thank you. Eric Bennett, would you like to make some closing remarks?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I'd just like to thank everybody that put this together tonight. I think it's a great event. I think it's a great opportunity, and the questions that were put together and those that are in attendance. But I, I think at the end of the day, our, you know, I look at it as our children are our biggest assets, right? They're the biggest assets for our families, our friends, our community, the United States of America. I think we, we carry a very heavy load on our shoulders. I think all the administration does. I think the teachers even that much more. We're very fortunate with what we have in Dundee. I will never discount that. I'm 100% committed to maintain Dundee to be the community that it is, to hopefully educate our children and remain keeping our children first in the spotlight as, as each one of them goes through, through life. It's not easy. There's tough decisions they're all gonna go through. There's tough decisions we're all gonna go through, and, and the board as well. So I'm, I'm excited at what the board's gonna look like. We, we have some serious, there's gonna be changeover on the board, and it's gonna be a challenge, and it's gonna take the community's understanding, whether I'm there or not, that the board has to rebuild a little bit and get to know one another as well, to have a full functioning board that can help Mr. Leach and help the administration. So I'm committed to that. I'm committed to continue, you know, fighting for our children and, and doing good things and, and supporting, supporting the staff. They're doing great things, so thanks again.
Thank you. Jacob Blacklock, would you like to make some closing remarks?
Yeah, so, you know, thank you for, you know, hosting this. If, if elected to the board, you know, I will always make sure that I'm keeping an open mind to, you know, all the community responses to any of the issues that, that are coming up, making sure that, you know, we, we do work together, you know, as, as a board and as a community, and just making sure that we're bridging those gaps, because, you know, we, we do need, you know, a strong community behind the Board of Education as well, too, to ensure that our children are getting the best possible education, as well as making sure that our teachers feel supported and that they have the resources as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jennifer Kiefer, do you have some closing remarks for us?
Yes. Thank you for putting this together, Tanya, and for hosting. When I was offered the job that I am now a part of, one of the decisions my husband and I had to make was whether or not to move to Detroit. And we decided to stay here, and I commute, because these, this school, the elementary school in particular, in our experience, has been an invaluable resource for us as an entire family, not just our kids. And I am running for school board because I believe that our, in the strength of our schools, I believe we have amazing teachers who need to continue to be supportive, and staff and administration who need that same support. I believe in the power of the relationships we have in this community, and the ways that we come together as a community to support one another. And I want our schools to be a place where each and every kid who enters these doors knows that they are seen and valued, regardless of who they are, what they look like, or who they love.
Thank you. We would like to thank all of these candidates for coming.
Can I say goodbye?
No! Did I do that to you?
Thanks for coming.
I'm so sorry, you know, old age. Would you like to make some closing remarks, Christian?
No, I'm, I'm good, thanks. No. I just want to say thank you. This has been fun. Although I hate public speaking, I've gotten better at it, more used to it. So I just want to say, you know, we've been lifelong residents of Dundee. My whole family has. I'm not going anywhere. Our kids are here. I've got a servant's heart. You know, this community and these schools have served me well and my family, and I want to give back and, and continue to serve on the board. I think it'd be great to have some continuity on the board, especially with the new superintendent. And, you know, I just look forward to hopefully serving in our term. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Final thing is a, a brief closing statement as to why you're running and why you feel you're a great candidate to be elected.
Okay. Well, first, I want to thank the opport, uh, you for the opportunity to have this. I was very disappointed that I was out of town for the original session, so I appreciate the opportunity, and I appreciate the questions and the ability for people to get to know me better. I am a, a, a pretty straightforward person. I'm easy to talk to. I'm open. I'm compassionate, and I absolutely believe in giving back to the community. And I have nothing but the best interests for, for the entire community and the kids on my mind when I decided that I was going to put my name in for school board. I think my background of working in audit gives, gives, is a good addition to being on a school board. I have, you know, come from the business aspect of it. I work with a diverse set of people. I'm in an analytical position, so that, that background, I think, is helpful to the board. And then I'm an auditor, so I'm used to, I guess, scrutinizing language, contract language, and managing budgets, and making sure that we are following appropriate protocol, and, and people are doing what they're supposed to be doing, because that's kind of the area that I've been working in for the last 20 years, so.
Thank you.
So we would like to thank all of these candidates for coming forward and offering to take on the responsibility of these positions. Being a school board member is an important job since it affects the education of all our children. They set the district's vision and policies, must monitor and adjust the finances in the district, and manage collective bargaining with a large number of employees. They represent the voices of the community, children, parents, other community members, and others in the public education process. Again, a genuine thank you to all of the candidates, and best of luck in the election. And Mr. Scott Leach would probably like to say some closing remarks, too.
I'd like to, again, thank everyone for coming. Thank you, folks, for listening in. Tanya, thanks for doing a great job of facilitating. Remember, I wouldn't be a history teacher if I didn't say, demonstrate your right to vote and get out there. You got early balloting, November 8th. It's, 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 we're in the best country in the world. Use that right and that privilege, and have a great day. Have a great, thank you, everybody. Thank you.